Pools or pools on top of condominium buildings essentially. So we're kind of like a sub to an architectural class.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
This is Flaherty. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mine, and Mr. Perontic. Did I say him right?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. My question is, I like accountability. So I guess our present engineer to give us a monthly report with what's going on, what's completed. Is there a problem with that?
Yeah. There's no problem with that.
All right. Also, meeting with the staff on a monthly basis or more, is that a problem?
That's not a problem.
All right. You know, stuff that was flooding here, okay? And we do have weir problems. How would you go about solving those problems?
That's more out of the question.
Did that word have a D on the end?
Weird.
Weird? Or weird?
Weird. Did I say it with a D?
I could have taken it either way.
I don't mean to be specific. I just mean...
Okay. So first, I would basically try to get as much information as to what happened. And I mean factual field information. And that could be surveys, it could be also photographs, maybe resident complaints if they came in. I also like to compare and contrast with other communities and what they experienced, particularly if they're, in your case, outfalling to the same drainage basin, Six Mile Cypress, to see if this is a local specific or if it's community-wide. I know my community, I had water two-thirds up, my front door too, very normal. But it came up and it went away. In another community where some friends live, they had water in the garage. And that was a much newer community than mine or actually was put around 2000. The other is to start running hydraulic modeling to see if the system's responding and basically in context with what we expected to do. And some other developments in the past, I've noticed that, no, it didn't. And it was certain specific isolated lakes. Once again, going back to maintenance or basically just getting field data, it was basically clogged connector pipes was the issue there. That was pretty much a pretty simple one. If all of those things, if they ask answering in general, get exhausted, then I start looking at larger pictures like, what can I talk to the Water Management District about concerning maybe changes, permitting changes, requirements so that some changes could be made? Maybe weir sizing or permits to make additional connections between certain lakes. Interconnectivity through the lakes is something that I have done in the past with other developers in the area. I know that's nebulous, but I don't feel like stating the others. For example, I like to have major water management lakes have two paths of outfall. This is the case, something is wrong with one, the other serves as a backup. And they're usually modeling this on that point. I don't know if I've answered your question as to when or not. Okay.
And my final question is, because we're all supervisors and we're kind of the board that you have to come down to, if and because we can't talk to each other, okay? If we have a question and we send it to you or want something that's specific, we want, I want to know that you're going to send that information to the district manager so he can tell, relay it to all the supervisors so we actually know what's going on, will that be a problem?
It's not a problem.
Thank you.
Mr. Tinkelman, you indicated... No, go ahead.
Yeah, I have three follow-ups, come-ups in discussion. Can you go back to the very first slide? I know you said that he had a conflict and couldn't be here, but can you tell us anything about, I'm gathering, the way you've got your manning table, that Jeff, is that his name?
Yes, sir.
He's the principal point of contact, that will be our, what we call, district engineer?
He is the principal in charge. I mean, he is the most major person.
But I mean, would he be the one that would come to our meetings and be the...
I would be.
Oh, you will be?
I would be.
Okay. So...
If for Passerella, it would be Shane Johnson.
Oh, sorry. Just a little bit, just so I know, some background. What's Jeff's background? Is he a departmental engineer, civil engineer?
Civil engineer, water and wastewater.
Water and wastewater, okay. Next question is, have you or do you, are you in a position that you have any, I hate to use the word loyalty, contractual relationship with either WCI, Lennar, or Worthington that you've got an exposure of doing work for those three developers?
No. Never had it.
And then the last one is, on stormwater-related work, you mentioned you're dealing with South Florida Water Management District. Who's been your point of contact over there that you're working with primarily?
Primarily, I speak to Brian Rose. And I know it was Dan Morris.
And do you do anything with Melissa Roberts, especially on any hydrology-related studies? No. Okay. That's all.
And Mrs. Flaherty, since she had the hallway...
I forgot to ask this question. Would you actively look for grants? I like grants. I like to solve some of our problems, we, you know, it's very costly. So I would, why not, if you were going to actively go out and seek these grants for us?
I can answer, yes. Yes, we do. We do that for, like I said, Muckler Water Service, we look at all the different funding opportunities. We do some for you.
Thank you. Sorry.
You had indicated that you worked on a project for the city of Fort Myers which entailed erosion of a lake bank or a water body bank. When was that?
That was probably five years ago.
Okay. What, where was that located? What?
It was in the Lag Tufts area downtown, well, just north of Colonial. Colonial Manners development. Colonial Terrace was the other development adjacent to that. But it was the Colonial Manners Lake that they were having some issues with, the lake bank. But it's not at the same magnitude that you...
Right. I just was curious when it was and what location, because the city of Fort Myers is a widespread, quite a geographical area. We had a board in helping to make our decisions and where we best should spend our money, rely heavily on our professionals or engineer and our attorney. And I just want to know how you handle budgeting if you're provided a project. Do you help the districts or the people that you work with curtail costs so that things don't get out of hand expensive?
Yes, we do. And I could elaborate on that a little bit. For instance, for Muckler Water, I know I keep coming back to that, but that's...
That's fine.
But most of my career down there's been geared towards. We do help them set up their capital improvement budgets. We look at the available funding, especially grants and loans, and if they can pay out of pocket, if they can't, look for different opportunities, depending on the size of the project, obviously, depends on the funding source. But we try to outline what they want to look at in the next five years. There's some things that, okay, well, we have to put this off, we can't afford it right now, but we're going to try to get more funding for that later on. So we try to outline which projects get done in which fiscal year. And in some cases, what we've been able to do is kind of split the project between two or three different budget cycles. So we do, we phase it in, we do, okay, well, this is the grand scheme, we want to do all this, but we can only afford to do maybe the first third of it this year, the second part next year, and then the final part the year after that. So we do try to work within the budget in that respect.
And so you would help us look for ways that we can cut costs?
Yes.
Anyone else have any other questions for this agenda? Thank you very much. Appreciate your time and your presentation.
Thank you very much. You.
Chris had asked me a question when we got started as to, did we want to go ahead and rank the two forms today, or do you want to bring it back to the next meeting and make a decision?
And Chairman, if you were in the form of a public workshop, you need to make votes for a public hearing in order to, if you're going to decide to take action. I think you characterize...
I'm sorry, would you say that again?
I think you characterized the beginning of the meeting more of a workshop.
Yes, I did.
And that the board is going to take action and need to do it at the public hearing as opposed to a workshop portion of the meeting.
Okay. So I closed the workshop and I opened up the regular session, the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. And it is 4:48, just for the record.
What was the schedule for the engineering decision?
Well, we had an extension of time. I think the original contract expired last week in May.
Were we expecting a decision today? Were we planning to vote today?
I'm ready to make one. I'm ready.
And that's why I just wanted to get kind of the feeling of the board. If the board wants to think about it, we can do this at the next meeting if we're ready to decide, if everyone thinks they know which way they want to go, we can rank and vote.
I want to hear what the other members have to say. There's no sense in putting it off and having our memory be clouded after two weeks.
Man, I'm sure what we're going to suggest is that you add as an agenda item, however you wish to put it, whether you wish to do it right after the call to order or under action items, the four D, and then move it up or do the four D consideration of ranking and authorization to negotiate with a particular engineering, which adds to the agenda, that would be a motion would be required to do that.
Okay.
And then the public will then be able to plot your input.
I will, I will ask for a motion to add this as action item four D.
I'll make that up.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any other question?
We have to move it up though.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Does this mean that we're going to vote on it today?
Yeah. Well...
It means it provides the opportunity for you to vote on it today.
We're going to discuss it.
We'll discuss whether we're going to vote on it.
Okay. That's what I needed to clarify.
Okay.
Now you control the vote and I can vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. We can. With that, we've already done the call to order, request to speak to the board?
No public comments today.
Whoa.
Well, I, we did have Mr. Francis Nocchi, he was going to speak, but he didn't want to wait. He's going to come back to the next meeting. His concerns are ownership and maintenance of Commerce Lakes Boulevard, so you'll be seeing him July 5th.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to staff reports. Our engineer who's probably sitting out in the line.
This is cruel and unusual punishment to bring them in now to do a recording.
That's why, that's why I wanted to move this up, get it underway.
And the board can do that. The board can, I think, label it as four D, then they can move it up on the agenda to wherever they wish.
He probably wants to go play tennis. District engineer, you're up.
For the record, my wife's at a conference and my in-laws have been living with me for three months, so I got nowhere to go.
He's been sleeping all night.
Holy, holy captain, just let him stay.
He's sleeping here at my office.
Mate, if that is a transparency, I don't know what that means.
I have a spare room. And I drink beer.
I got vodka in the truck. So we've got nothing on the agenda, but to bring back what we were discussing earlier during the interview process.
There you go, Bill.
So I, we reached out, following, following the last meeting, we actually reached out to Brian Rose and tried to get a meeting with him. And I could, I could read you the email. Chris was, was on it and basically, they'll, they'll meet with us, they can't, you know, not meet with us, but the gist of it was, go model the, the system. He said, what questions do you have that I can answer? And I said, one, will you give us a permit? And two, are we going to have to model the entire system? And his response was, where will the water go if it's not in Hampton Park? And my answer was, in the flowway. And that's how it ended. But I tried to, we had a, he said he had availability of, last Friday. And then he started asking all the questions, and that's when we went back and forth, I could, four D emails, I could read them to you. But bottom line, I'm sure we could get a meeting with him, but he's obviously not, you know, very interested in meeting and wants to see them all. So what I said at the last meeting is that before I moved forward doing anything, I would vet that out and come back to the board to seek direction. So still in that process essentially of vetting it out. So I don't know where you want me, if you want me to continue to do that and find out, or if we want to put that on hold or what we, you know, want to do. Bottom line is, even if you were to do anything right now, it would not help us for this rainy season. I know that Hampton Park obviously would like to see it, but by the time you went through a design permitting and got a permit, you're going to be looking at, you know, September, October anyhow. So I'm not saying kick the can down the road. I'm saying maybe we should talk about that more global, or I can, I can continue to try to get a meeting with the Water Management District. But I think Chris can attest, we gave it, we tried, and it just, I mean, my, my understanding of his attitude was it didn't seem real, you know, too interested in meeting.
Question mark.
This is Flaherty.
Okay. If you get a meeting with the person who...
Yeah, the person, you have to get a meeting with that person, that person who's talking about.
Okay. Whether you get it or not, okay, is it going to make a difference? Is that what you're saying?
He, they will not be able to tell us at that point that they will give us the permit. What I wanted to meet with was so that we could see, and Chris could be there as well, and see, yeah, you know what? He can't tell you you're not going to get a permit, but it's going to be darn difficult to get a, a permit without doing this. That's what I'm hoping to see, or, yeah, this seems plausible, let's, let's move forward and see where it ends up. That's what I was hoping to see where it'd be before we went and spent money on, on doing what we're, you know, tasked to do. That was the goal.
So you're, you want this meeting with, with Water Management to see if there's any chance to get the permit?
Well, to see, to fill them out for where they, where they think we're going to be. Yes.
So, okay. I, I think, I can say, just judging from the Stony Brook weir and the water level, we're above the bleeder now, no, there's no work that could be done at that weir at this time.
And that's one of the things that, that, so that part's true, there's the, the physical side. And then getting back to relating that to the permit side, Stony Brook is an adjacent community, and then you've got the communities downstream within Pelligan. So that's going to be the question that they will ask, is how will this impact the downstream communities? So I think if they were to drive out there now and to say that really we're just in the beginning of the rainy season, they're probably not going to be, you know, too much in favor of that. However, we can keep going down that road, so.
I agree. Stony Brook is different than Hampton Park. Hampton Park's going to be done at any time because it's a different type of structure. Stony Brook's is a location that makes it difficult. I think the question, and I asked, if, ask, if you asked, when you were talking to Brian, does Brian realize, did you make him aware of the fact that the original ERP was modified for Basin One and that there opened up a alternative of that additional foot of head that going to Basin Three instead of Basin Four?
Yes.
Is that, and he was aware of that?
Yes. However, I think if we had a sit-down meeting, we could then demonstrate that as opposed to saying over the phone.
That's what I would definitely want. And then the second part of it, is he aware that the downstream Basin Three weir was not built in accordance with the South Florida Water Management District permit?
I'm sure he's not aware of that.
Those are the points, I think, that we can have a sit-down, show them that they have vulnerability. I'm not asking for a complete hydraulic change or flowway until we do the hydraulic analysis. If I were in their shoes, I'd tell you to do that. But Hampton Park's a different ballgame, totally different ballgame.
And, and at the end of the day...
And I think that we should, we could, we could show anyone why it would be a good idea to do it.
And at the end of the day, they control whether or not that weir could be raised, just like the Kecor example. They can still tell us that we've got to, we've got to drop it down. So they have that. So if, and honestly, it'd be easy for them to permit it and then never give us approval to, you know, to lower it.
Well, I guess my question is, Danny, is that when WCI went back, not Lennar, WCI went back, came in with the Johnson Engineering Plan to bypass the building of the three lakes in the FPL Eastman and put in the 1,300 feet of 60-inch pipe, did anyone make South Florida aware that this is a major change to where the water was going to go and consequently would have allowed that to drop down one foot?
I, I mean, they obviously permitted the, you know, the piping, but did they realize...
I don't think, I don't think they realized it.
Right.
I think that's what happened. So I, I would say, give it the shot of the meeting face-to-face, then let them tell us no. But concurrent with that, go on ahead and start, we'll talk about probably at the July meeting, because I don't think we're ready yet, get this equipment installed so we can start getting the water data to be able to use to calibrate the model for the rest of the community. We need to be doing that. But if they come back and tell us Hampton Park, even after a sit-down meeting, no, hell no, we've done all we can do.
Well, I don't know if that's a discussion that the entire board has been on primi of, but we discussed it at the last meeting, and I think Chris has talked to a vendor and got a price from Charlie Mondale, who I know, and to install equipment. So I don't think that, I don't know if that's been shared with the board.
I think he's going to have the discussion in his...
Okay. I didn't know, I didn't know, so I didn't know if this is appropriate.
But, yeah, we're, we're definitely wanting to do that, but that's for that big, big picture study. But I definitely want to say, have the meeting, I think it would be very beneficial to have the meeting with South Florida, with Brian, with Melissa, and show them what we've got and why we want to do it on just that one, on just that one. If they come back and say, no, it's going to be a part of the whole study, then we do the whole study.
Well, we'll, we'll reach out and pin them down again tomorrow, and I'll let them know this is the second time the board's asked me to come to you.
Then we could also ask them what they want us to do with the two and a half feet of weir that we're going to cut out on both sides of weir three to begin permit compliance. I think that'll get action.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah. So Danny, I, I think we're all in agreement that we want you to have the meetings. I think we've missed the threshold to have any impact this, this year's season. The only thing I would ask is, let's look at when we need to either complete construction in order to impact potentially 2019, unless we're sure we back into that, that setback schedule so we know when we need to start hitting things or when we need to start construction to have an impact on next year if we've missed our window for this year.
Sure. And there's, and there's two things. There's, one is, there's the window of, of those improvements making a difference. And then the other part that Ed had mentioned, that you can do the improvements anytime, and that part is true, is that it's a, it's, I think it'd be relatively easy to block that area off, de-water it and do the improvements, even if it wasn't a wet season. But I don't think we're going to need to do that because we're going to miss this wet season in terms of being able to use it.
One of the improvements we could do to Stony Brook right now, and it's very easy to do, is using a bracket that simply fits over your weir. We could put in a baffle and drop that down there with just the sheet metal like they have in Hampton Park that's in front of the weir. Have a couple of notches bolts on that, go up, over, and down, and drop it right on your concrete structure, and then we protect that orifice.
That would keep me from having to go out there and hang from the fencing and rake apples and oranges away from the orifice.
Yeah, but we could generate revenue by that. Except for the tickets to have people watch that. But no, I think we need to get that baffle on because if we're not going to do anything, I think we're crazy making a mistake going on ahead with another rainy season and not having something in the way of a baffle on that, that structure.
So there's got to be a plan of action, like you're, you're immediate, just for preventative maintenance or whatever, and then, and then back into...
We could build that baffle in the shop.
Well, I think some of the, some of the surveying that's been going on has helped confirm some of these elevation issues, so we can then take that back to the Water Management District and show that, no, it was not built for yours, we're, so then it's simply maintenance, and there should not be a permit required for that.
I, I think if the questions or if the logic of the meeting is delivered to them right, I think they're going to see that they, they, they'll never admit it, but they've got some exposure that they have allowed things to happen out here over the last 32 years, that they are pristine white on this.
Mrs. Flaherty, you have a question?
Well, do we need a motion to put the baffle on or have them go for the answer?
Yeah.
Okay. But I do think we need to go forward with this because at least it looks like we're doing something that's proactive, even though it's because of what happened, and at least we're trying.
Well, you're going to, you're going to have some reactiveness, being proactive to what in the past, you know, we're reacting to things that were done wrong, so.
A proactive reaction.
And this'll give us an idea of where their thought processes on what they're going to require of us, and I think that's important for us to know. I will say that I think when they decided to not have those three lakes built in the FPL Eastman, I don't think they took into consideration where some of that surface water was going to drain to. And that ends up draining into the unpermitted FPL flowway that drained Stony Brook. So when we had all that high water last year, for Stony Brook to drain, we were fighting the water that was coming off of the FPL Eastman and, not an engineer, but I would say that the FPL Eastman won out, and Stony Brook came in last to drain.
And that, you know, and what little information exists on that flowway, my memory of that flowway is it's dedicated to Stony Brook, so I don't think anybody ever did think about sheet flow that could be coming in to that from, from the FPL Eastman. I don't know that that larger area's been surveyed.
The FPL Eastman is draining, if you drive out there on the FPL Road and you stop at that flowway, you can watch the water draining into the flowway in two locations, just side of the road from the FPL Eastman. So that's where it go?
Well, the other issue too is we have, that goes into Pond 130. Pond 130 goes to 127 or 130 to the flowway via two 84-inch 900 pipes, one of which is 30% blocked.
Well, I think, you know, once it gets...
And has been since day one. So we've got to get that fixed too. That doesn't help the situation.
Once it gets into the system that whatever was in the FPL Eastman was part of historical flow, but it's how it's getting there, it's getting into that conveyance that was dedicated to Stony Brook. So, yeah, that, that, that should be addressed at some point.
So I think we, my deal is we proceed or authorize to continue the discussion, at least have a sit-down with South Florida to discuss these items. But on the long-term, we're just going to have to bite the bullet and head toward the hydraulic analysis.
Well, we'll approach it from a little bit different angle. Instead of it just being about Hampton Park, we'll approach it from...
The whole picture.
Yeah.
And let them know what we're doing long-term, but we're asking for this short-term because we feel that we have justification for doing it.
So that, that's all I have.
You, I have one more question. Go, Mr. Nelson. Where are we at the storage facility plans?
The storage facility, we're still waiting on the landscape drawings.
Do we have a date when we will get those?
We're, no, we don't. We'll, the, unfortunately, the contact with Brady Minor, mother-in-law, passed away, so we haven't been able to reach him. But I'll reach out tomorrow and see if he's back, and hopefully it'll be next week.
Is there optimal time for us to start construction on that? Is there any time that's better than, I mean, considering the rainy season might have, might not be an optimal time, but...
I mean, really, that's, you know, you're not dealing with anything vertical where you've got concrete, so, yeah, there may be rain days that impact you, but it's really that type of construction, you can do anything.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
Thank you.
I will either have that baffle in place by the next meeting or I'll give you a report in a few short years. We've already had some discussions in the preliminary.
Let me know when I don't have to take my rig after I... District Council?
A couple items I made, I recall we had a conversation, decided to be on here with regards to parking for the restaurant. uh, with regards to parking for the restaurant. Uh, constant parking on District Road, the Commerce Lake Drive, Porsche Boulevard, Gateway Boulevard, that little wall called Entry, couple hundred feet. Uh, and so this, I did not attach exhibit, but this is geared solely for that area. It can be utilized in the future for any additional areas if the board wishes. But if the board wishes to implement a tollway zone policy as in addition, in conjunction with no parking signs, which require Lee County approval, uh, replacement. I think Mike mentioned that last time, relatively minor approval process. Then it's recommended that this is the policy that be adopted. And if attached, and the board adopts this, then the exhibit that would be attached as part of the defined tollway zone in Exhibit A would just be that roadway segment from Gateway Boulevard to a couple hundred feet in on Commerce Lake Drive. It's by-
The segment's being transferred over to us?
We already own that.
They, it was transferred?
Yes, sir.
Are we, no, I hate to bring this up. Are we opening a can of worms for Pelican Reserve and Stony Brook where we have public roads that this could be asked to be extended into those? To me, I, I could care less one way or the other, but it might be to Bill, you, and Margaret and the others that are in Stony Brook.
I don't-
I wish I weren't Stony Brook, but I'm not initially. No, Pelican, Pelican Reserve and Stony Brook, but, but the point is, is that this is a, a, a public or a road that we own.
Uh, may I?
Go right here.
This board considered the issue of, um, tollway zones some years or two ago. They decided that we did not want to get into that business and that we would very likely irritate our residents to know in. And so we decided to not go forward. And I think that was a terrific decision, and I, and I would not be in favor of it unless you could give me some overwhelming reason why we should.
This one's a little different. The one that we was talking about a couple of years ago was where we had residents doing it predominantly within the community. Here, we're talking about one commercial owner who does not have the place to park the vehicles that attend his restaurant. And we really don't have, we've had more people complaining about them parking and one of them towed away than I've heard the other way around. Like, why did they get away with parking on the grass that the CDD pays and maintains for? What, how did, how did they get away with that? So it's a little bit different.
I don't know, but you've heard about the slippery slope, I'm sure.
That's why I said earlier, I hate to open this can of worms.
And, and I don't really see this as a can of worms. And it's not like, this, this is like a last resort sort of an option. That we ha, we're giving, we're asking or we're telling our residents we have the ability to tow in circumstances where it needs to be done. It's not like we're willy-nilly going to be towing people left and right twenty-four seven. So I don't see it as a problem issue.
I'm all for it. My only issue was re-bringing it up, was is there some precedence established by this that somebody could put us in a corner?
No. This is, each circumstance, it's an ad hoc determination based upon the deep facts and circumstances. Here you have parking on the grass on the right of way, I understand it. So you have infrastructure that could be damaged. You have vegetation, you probably have gutters or curbs in that area. And there might be utility lines, might be irrigation hazards, all kinds of infrastructure that could be damaged by parking off the road. Um, and I think that's why this is unique.
Okay, that's my only question.
I mean, is there an al, I'm, I don't wanna get into, I don't wanna get into tow business. But is there another alternative that we, you know, could, on the area that we manage and maintain or own, is there something that we could maybe construct, or whether it's a hedge or, uh, a sign or something that would just literally stop them from, from parking on that side? But it's more preventative maintenance than, than creating a policy that I think would create some issues.
If he, well, there's one thing that we could do, where he turns into his place. Right now, they're coming down through the V ditch, over the sidewalk, and parking in the grass. If he wants to take and allow them to come into his place, in his driveway, then go down his grass and stay off the right of way, I wouldn't have a problem with that. He can park on his grass all he wants for all I care, but he's, he's cutting off the pavement, going through our right of way to go over the sidewalk to park in his place. And sometimes parking our grass. So I, I don't have, as long as there's not a precedent issue.
You're talking about on the, on the Gateway Boulevard side?
Yeah.
You're talking about on Commerce Lake? On Commerce Lake side. It's happening on both.
The Gateway Boulevard side, that's the county that's at, that's right away. So the county can then take an erection as we-
I mean, I hate it, 'cause it's, you know.
I think this gives us the ability to say, hey, look, if you don't fix the problem, this is what our, our answer is.
But it's, it's tied, I mean, they-
Got there one night, and it'll solve the problem.
Well, from what I heard, he's even, you know, discussed leasing or renting space surrounding, and that was turned down. He can't just manufacture space, and, and we're almost slapping him on him for being successful.
You know, and what approach might be, I don't know if you, if you, like, certified letter has gone to him yet saying that this parking is causing damage to district infrastructures, inappropriate, improper. We're gonna put to you, you know, hold you all liable.
This allows us to, for that certified letter to have some teeth, to say, you need to resolve this issue before we have to.
Yeah, this gives you the ability to implement it. Once you, you can, you can say, we designate this, and then the staff go through and get necessary approvals for the park, no parking signs and the tollway signs. And then, you know, the board wants to implement it, then it's-
He's doing nothing to tell us Patriots don't do it right there. That's the problem.
Mrs. Flaherty?
Two things.
Okay.
One is if we put a hedge, Mr. Banks, then they don't care about hedge.
Yeah, it's a school.
Yes, right, yeah, at the school, they go right through it. So that wouldn't stop them. The second thing is, I always thought, this is how I thought it was permitted, the restaurant, that it was supposed to be a takeout, okay? And, um, so I'm wondering if that changed, 'cause that's what I had heard, that the permit was a takeout.
I, I don't know exactly, but last meeting, I just quickly pulled up the development order description from Lee County's website. It had talked about indoor, outdoor dining and tables and, and retail office space.
Yeah.
So it's not just the restaurant and the dining, there's ability for commercial and retail space.
The whole of the site is not even notified yet.
Correct, couple thousand square feet, I believe, a thousand or so square feet. So, uh, it appears like it's, it's beyond takeout, and it's allowed to have more.
That's what, when it was first, um, put out, that's what I was told. It was just gonna be a takeout, so.
If I can bring to attention too, Kenny reminded me that a truck came in there to park and sheared the top of the manhole off over there and left it. And there was about a five-foot hole open until we went by and saw it and had to fix it.
In the grass?
Yeah. It's on the far side of the restaurant, but it looked like a truck. Or someone took it and basically sheared off five inches of the top of the concrete lid and dragged it. And then there was the open holes, so if somebody walked by there, they would've-
Yeah, I'd, I'd make the motion that we pass Resolution twenty eighteen dash whatever number we're on, and that immediately get a copy of it to the owner of the, uh, restaurant, letting them know that this is what's going.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay.
Okay. However, I would re, would like the chair, before we do, um, vote on a motion, to repeat the motion, because people talk during, sometimes during the motion, and we don't get it exactly straight.
He said that he wanted, uh, his motion was to pass Resolution twenty eighteen dash whatever the next number is.
Okay.
Um, and, and I can't remember, do, do we have no parking signs?
Yeah, we haven't done any.
At the present time, my understanding is, I guess, the thing that's, Mike indicated last time, we don't have them yet.
Yeah, we need the, uh, the resolution in place for the city to post them on the Gateway side. And then we could do them on our side, but it's really only our road right up at the intersection.
They're already posted on the Gateway side, the Boulevard.
Um, on page one, Mr. Tony?
Yes.
The fourth where it is down, it's got included in an approved list of lowing.
Oh, don't worry, sorry.
So I'd like for the resolution to have that-
Yeah, lowing sounds like a bunch of cows out in the field, I guess, lowering. This is a, you know, telling, thank you for that catching that.
Any further discussion?
How's this, how are we gonna enforce this?
The, uh, we, no parking signs will be located. No tollway signs consistent with the statutory scheme will be posted in this area. And then when someone parks there, then discretion is on management to call the towing operator. And have towing operator come out there and tow.
That's what we do over Gateway, bringing some reds, jumps in, picks them up twelve o'clock at night.
And this allows us, this, uh, resolution, would, uh, oh, we're adopting a policy for towing for all of Gateway?
No, this, Exhibit A would just be that roadway segment.
Just the one roadway segment?
From the easternmost right of the curve of Gateway Boulevard.
That's what I wasn't clear on.
It's in a couple hundred feet, but just, just-
Yeah, so you were saying for different areas, if we wanted to implement it in a different location, then we would come back to this resolution to add to it.
Yes, or have a separate resolution.
Okay. So I will call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No, no.
I'm in favor, so it passes three to two. All right, Mr. Tony, I think you're still up.
Yes, ma'am. Oh, but the, uh, excuse me. As a follow-up to the meeting where the board accepted the transferring conveyance of various drainage facilities in Hampton Park, there was a discussion with regards to the smaller pipe sizes of the drainage system being acquired and whether or not there were easements in place and the ability to obtain easement. And in re, uh, reading, the rereading, the various Hampton Park covenants, comfortable there is a process for that to take place whereby, basically, you would get the record drawings of the drainage system, right? And have a, I'll call it horizontal tolerance for a few feet on the side of those. And then create a drawing describing those, this is primarily along Belpress Boulevard, the rear of those lots, describing the area where those pipes are located and give it about another, at least five feet on the side of the pipes, maybe seven feet, whatever's engineering appropriate. And then record, have that document recorded in the public records of Lee County as being the drainage easement area. Because generally, the way the covenants read is it can be drainage easement or any portion of it, but it, it doesn't really define the full horizontal extent. And by having the record drawings, having them identified as being the drainage easement, in my opinion, would, inconsistent with these covenants, would take care of the issue. Would be documented signed by the master association, in my opinion, ratifying, confirming the location of the facility.
Well, there, the line, there, they would be covered if they would have installed it within the ten feet that is in their master association. Unfortunately, they have a thirty-foot landscape buffer, and it's on the house side, ten feet. So my, my thought was-
Just take the thirty-foot landscape park easement, and have that be the easement for the drainage? That could be-
Bingo.
If the, if the association is minimal to that, I can prepare that.
I wouldn't have a problem with that at all.
Have them confirm that.
Yeah.
Okay?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Because that's where, that's where it is indeed located.
If I can get that direction to the board, I'll work with the, has that been turned over yet? The, the-
July, they turn over-
I think the end of July.
July thirty-first.
Okay.
That'd make it a lot easier.
And I, I think I can work with WC Lennar, I think, on that also in the interim. They, I don't think they'd have an issue with that, and the residents want it like that, so. With the board, just to, I don't need any formal action, just the board's consensus, that would be the direction.
Yes.
Okay. So the thirty feet match the LVE. Okay, thank you. Uh, nothing further?
Questions for the attorney?
Yes, sir.
Uh, and I don't know if you're going to, I heard earlier something about a gentleman was gonna come, and he's gonna bring it up at the July meeting, which doesn't bother me. But I don't, did everybody read the treatise that he wrote?
Couple treatises.
On the, uh, uh, the road turnovers of the three or four?
With the defunct corporate entities?
With the defunct, yeah, POAs. Did everybody read that? It was a long, he passed out at the last meeting.
Oh, yes, I did.
Fairway Office Park, Town Lakes now.
Yeah.
This needs, and I don't know why years ago it happened the way it did, but we went in and solved it for Town Lakes Office Park. Town Lakes Office Park is not any different than the other ones that we're talking about now. Town Lakes Office Park came forward like good, representative citizens and worked out with the board a deal to where they're paid, pay a special assessment for each of those lots for the maintenance of their facilities. We could do that for these other three. I don't see why we couldn't do it. But the issue is, is that it's not fair that Town Lakes sat here for all these years, eight years, being paid, paying for this service, and these other three just let them dissolve and have done nothing. Uh, you, you laid out a plan for how we go about doing it. I guess my question is, it looked like to me, the next step is, we need to officially send a letter to the points of contact asking them if one of them will sign off on this document that you had.
Well, the, going back to the whole issue with regards to who are the officers at the time of the dissolution, I think we already had that exercise through David Caldwell.
We tried?
Yeah, and David said, yeah, I think he said he couldn't find one, he could find another, but they were unwilling. And I think we tried, and I think, once again, I think the easiest, assuming forsaken discussion that the proprietors in each of these areas, excuse me, are not adverse to having a formal transfer of the roads to the district, would be, you have an affected property owner in the association or in that neighborhood to petition the court for the employment of a trustee for the sole purpose of deeding the roadway tract to the district. I can't imagine that would be an expensive proposition.
Does that mean we have to notify each?
Uh, uh, that, I, might, might be, that would be up to them to take care of that. They being the proprietors in that particular area.
But how do we get to them, the problem we got? I don't, half of them don't even know that there's an issue. They're just mad because it's not being taken care of.
Well, the one group, Dan's Reserve has a, uh, proprietors association, don't they, homeowners?
Yeah.
That would be one, at least for them, as far as the commercial folks. You can just call a meeting of those commercial property owners and say, here, here are a couple of them.
That's where I was going, is could we draft a, a, a kind of a generic letter for each one of those three or four to the residents of that? We've got their names off the leep, and say, hey, this is the problem we've got. This is what we have come to be, understanding of the only way to solve this. Is there going to be any objections? Is this one of those where it's a hundred percent?
Uh, yeah, I, I'd submit that it's up to them to take what erection you do. So if the board wants to say, listen, y'all, we're willing to take this road if you take the necessary steps.
That's my point. How do, how do we get that information to them?
I think just in a simple letter, I think. Chris, have you had any meetings with anybody, like, oh, AKA in the past? I thought you had some meetings, trying to get them together?
Talk to the folks.
But they didn't seem to be all fired up, or?
No, they could approach.
But that was my understanding in the past, if it's-
I think it's gonna take a letter, you're gonna get a letter and say the district wants you to form a, they're gonna, phew. Man, you know, unless someone goes, hey, I would love to spearhead and champion this effort to, you know, that's just not-
Well, or the alternative could be, hey, listen, the district has been, you know, is in a position to accept these roads and bring them up to snup, and, oh, by the way, they're gonna be in hollacious condition a few years from now. And the best way to have it is to have one single ownership.
And we're not gonna bail you out when you, when it burns. We can't do it.
And I guess that's what, I think the board's frustrated by, and from my perspective also, that, that if the proprietors aren't willing to get together themselves, it, it, you know, we can't force them. You know, we keep coming up with solutions and they just don't seem to care, I guess. I'm just baffled by that, quite frankly.
Well, see, if you can maybe-
I'll be happy, I'll go approach whoever I can, see if we can get somebody there.
Well, like the fire department might, now that they're there, they may put a little squeeze on them too.
Most of them convert the meaning of operation and maintenance to increased assessments. That's why they say no, and if they hang around long enough, the CDD will come in and bail them out. That's exactly what they're doing. The ones I've talked to, that is exactly-
Well, if you always had that conversation, say, the district will come bail you out. Since you're the only ones benefiting from it, we will only assess your properties.
Yeah.
So if they're gonna say, pay an hour or pay later?
Pay an hour, pay later. But I, I, I'd like to see that continued, at least to the point that we make that contact and it dies and dies.
Chris, let me know what I can do, if I can make the contact, if anything at all.
Okay.
If the follow-up letter for me, you could push, pull up points, not, if you could.
I'll find out the right person to talk to.
Thank you, Chris. I'm gonna move the meeting along to action items. Uh, first one is utilities expenditures for irrigation, new station valves, Kenny Hall.
Good afternoon, Kenny Hall, you're the manager. Uh, this is a CFP approved, uh, action item. Uh, this is, uh, I also wanted to add, the BCI came back to us, they're our SCADA, our normal SCADA provider. They gave us a, uh, added two more stations, we would like to add that onto this. This will be mostly for new station plug valves, gate valves, um- This will be mostly for lift station plug valves, gate valves, um, check valves in the lift stations. We'll be adding any stations that don't have P traps, we'll be adding them. Um, and that will be about all of it. Uh, the ductile iron in three of our stations has gotten corroded to the point that we are going to have to replace it. We're looking to replace it with HDP as opposed to ductile iron. And that is...
What you wanted to add, has that changed the expenditure?
No.
Madam Chairman, I'm willing to make a motion to approve this. Kenny will remind me what SCADA stands for.
Systems Command and Data Acquisition?
S- Systems.
Systems Command and Data Acquisition?
Thank you.
I'll second. Hey, I've got a motion in a second to approve Kenny's proposal. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You've got it. Thank you.
And the capability of our SCADA system, um, the water level monitoring equipment that we've been discussing recently too, could piggyback right into that system. So we would have the interface that's already here, equipment.
And, um, Mr. District Manager, I think you're gonna do the, the irrigation zone control system.
Sure. And those are, those are basically to enhance our ability to upgrade the turf over in the soccer park. And, uh, it's kinda tough with the field, fields right now because of the lack of capability of those systems. So one thing we can do that's affordable is to, uh, replace those controllers over there.
This one wasn't on our capital improvement plan, was it?
It's in budget.
It's in the new budget?
Uh, no, it's in the existing.
We had it existing?
Yes, sir. And we, it wasn't specifically earmarked for the soccer field, but the money we had in there will cover that expense.
Mrs. Flaherty? I wanna know what guarantee we have that this is gonna work and when we install it. What is the guarantee?
Um, it will because it has capability. The other ones, right now, we really can't set different zones. You either turn that system off and the soils are very different on each of those fields. So it makes it very difficult to maintain it properly.
And we will get a guarantee with this?
Yes, a guarantee warranty.
Yeah.
If you're two of us, it's...
The equipment has a warranty. They're not gonna guarantee our fields are gonna be perfect because we change them.
Well, I wanna make sure it's gonna work the way it's supposed to work. That's the guarantee I want.
They'll, they'll warrant their equipment. They are going to warrant the process of the design.
And we work closely with Manscape on this because it makes their life a lot easier too.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that's passed.
We need to be doing this throughout the community on our zones to where that equipment is shot. We've been using battery nodes.
Hey, and Chris, in that regard, if, there's an opportunity when we're looking at the irrigation, we're making the modifications. If at all possible, if we can get the irrigation not to blast our concessions...